Okay, thank you, Melinda. We are now recording and I want to call the Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. Dr. Cog board work session to order. It is one minute after four on November 3rd. Call to order is done. Public comment is next. I know, Melinda, you're busy transferring people, but we have time set aside for public comments at all of our meetings. Let me ask if there is anybody who from attending from the public who would like to address the board. I don't see anybody on the phone, so I imagine everybody has the raise hand function in. Zoom, seeing none. Okay, we'll move on then. Item three, summary of the September 1st board work session. I hope that folks had a chance to look it over. I did. I was not at that meeting. I was starting a week of travel then, so I just wanted to thank Chair Stolzmann for filling in for me that day. So if there's no objection, we will accept that summary and move forward to item four, which is one of our two main items of business here. Discussion of the multimodal options fund integration options with senior planner Todd Cutrell. Is Todd ready to present? Yes, he is. I see it on the screen.
I am. Thank you so much.
Sure, take it away.
All right. Thank you, board members. So we have a lot of information here to unpack at eight slides. So I'm hoping upfront that I'm not going to lose anyone. But what we're trying to get through is the continuation of the multimodal options fund funding source and how to integrate that through a couple of options that staff are presenting from FY22, so our current year through FY27. So through Senate Bill 18, Dr. Cog was able to allocate a funding source from the state called Multimodal Options Fund. The purpose of this through the course of the last tip cycle was to further develop a complete and integrated multimodal transportation system. Eligibility included active transportation, so bike and pad transit, both operational and capital, multimodal mobility, and of course, studies. So of the statewide total, Dr. Cog received approximately $46 million. This funding source did contain and require a 50% match. And there was an end date on this funding source, meaning that all funds expired in June of '23. So currently, project sponsors who have this funding source on their projects are working towards that date, hopefully to avoid that date and to get their projects completed before that. So earlier this year, as part of Senate Bill 260, this program was renewed and renamed the Multimodal Transportation and Mitigation Options Fund. The eligibility was slightly expanded to include modeling and greenhouse gas mitigation projects that decrease VMT or increase multimodal travel. One thing at this point, Dr. Cog does not know what the distribution of the statewide total will be. However, based on the formula that was used for the last tip cycle, we expect that to be approximately $167 million from the current fiscal year through the end of federal fiscal year '27. The CDOT Transportation Commission is expected to take up action this month for that distribution formula. So hopefully later, within the next two or three weeks, we will know exactly what those numbers will be. As part of this funding package, the state did a little, did something different. And they heavily front-loaded the current fiscal year with federal ARPA funds, which are the American Rescue Plan Act funds. These ARPA funds have an obligation deadline of the end of 2024 and expenditure deadline of the end of 2026. So very similar to the previous package of funds. The obligation deadline simply says that they must be at that point in a particular stage of their project to be able to move on by the end of '24 and must completely expend those funds by the end of '26. So you can see the graphic that we put there on the bottom of your screen that sort of outlines the expectation of funds over the six-year period. Now, as we were sort of going through and learning about this new funding source and thinking of ways, well, what is the best way to program it? We did go through a number of potential issues and roadblocks and different methods that we could to program this. So we just wanted to share those with you. The first being is that this funding program continues with a 50% match and the listing of eligible projects is somewhat limited in the flexibility of the program. That is concerning in the respect that in the previous cycle, it did also contain a 50% match and it had that limited flexibility and was fairly difficult to program, especially when we were combining with other federal funding sources that had only a 20% match. So of course, if you're a project sponsor, you certainly don't necessarily want to put forth more match than necessary. The next step is looking at the funding that's contained in the current fiscal year in addition to next year, 2023. According to tip policy, Dr. Cog will program funds from our current waitlist, our waitlist from the '22 to '25 tip first. However, when we go through that list, there are some limitations on the existing projects on that list that deal with, well, maybe multimodal funds won't necessarily take care of some of those projects again, just based on the eligibility limitations. It's certainly possible, but we can certainly work with project sponsors to possibly, you know, conduct some funding swaps that would potentially remove some of those projects off the list. But there is not a great deal number of those that we could go through. Another item that we would certainly look at is, well, since we do have an influx, a large influx of funds, what if we just simply hold another call for projects for the current tip cycle? Well, if we continue down the path of our scheduled '24 to '27 tip cycle, that will be at approximately the same time, starting in January of our regional call for the '24 to '27 tip. So certainly, I think from a staff perspective, we would not want to hold two calls for projects for two separate tip cycles at the same time. It would certainly would just add to the confusion. The next item is kind of deals with how we conduct tip cycles. So Dr. Cog creates a brand-new tip every two years. However, we only select projects every four years. So that meaning in the '22 to '25 tip cycle, fiscal years '24 and '25 are simply not programmed with Dr. Cog allocated projects and funds. So do we take those newly discovered multimodal funds in '22 and '23? Just we simply just wait and program that until the new '24 to '27 tip? Part of the conversations we've been having also deal with, we don't know what's going to happen with the FAST Act and it's the uncertainty that deals with that. We've heard that there certainly could be a vote on a new bill this week. It's anyone's guess. There's a continuing resolution for the FAST Act that goes through December 3rd. So at least for now, we know how long the FAST Act will continue for. The assumption is right now, based on a reading of the bill as it states right now, that we will receive additional '22 and '23 funds to program. We just don't know exactly if the bill that we're viewing right now will be the final bill that passes. So kind of taking all of this information to account, we sort of developed, well, there's two overarching goals for this process. The first is because these ARPA funds are contained within FY22, we would really like to get those out the door as soon as possible. So really maximize the opportunity to meet those spending timeframes. The second really deals with the 50% match of the multimodal funds. We certainly would like to be able to leverage the existing federal funds against the multimodal funds to create and lower that match, lower than 50% for the multimodal fund. But regardless of the options that we'll present here in a second, there's two things that we certainly wanted to state upfront is first, we will continue to work through the adopted tip policy and conduct that waitlist process first. Just earlier this week, I did send an email notification out to all those existing sponsors on those project waitlists and really notified them to start looking at their projects so that when funding does come through and we, it's confirmed to come through on both Multimodal Options Fund and if a new bill is passed relatively soon, that we can start working and selecting projects off that waiting list. The second is because there's a lot of influx and to assist in reducing that multimodal fund match from 50% down to 20%. We've looked at conducting any future calls using two tracks. So you can look at this as two individual parallel tracks or using two applications within the calls for projects. The first would be, and again, our naming convention isn't necessarily the best, but a STBG track. So we would use those STBG funds along with any eligible project that is eligible for those STBG funds. That would require and keep a 20% match requirement. The second track called the air quality and multimodal would use a combination of federal sources, so state and federal sources. So one, the multimodal options fund, CMAC funding, TA, which is transportation alternatives. And if a new bill passes, there is a proposed new program called the Carbon Reduction Program, which is proposed to be very similar to how CMAC is. And we certainly would combine those funds and this call or this track and application would use for only those eligible projects. We would continue to allocate for a 20% local match by combining these funds. So for example, if multimodal funds is used in one of these air quality and multimodal tracks, we would be able to combine a project using multimodal funds, a combination of other federal sources, and then also a match. So the first of the two options, option A is called sequential. So there's a lot of information that's located in the slides. I'll try just to highlight what I perceive as probably the most important information. So this simply says that we will conduct four calls for projects. The first two will be a regional and a subregional call for the '22 to '25 period, and it would only utilize this air quality and multimodal track. We would be able to start this call in January of next year for the regional call. Follow that up in May with the subregional call. And then by the time we get to approximately a year from now in October, we would be able to amend those projects that were selected using those two calls for projects directly into the '22 to '25 tip. Immediately following that, we would hold an additional two calls, regional and subregional. This would cover the '24 to '27 time period, but would utilize both tracks. So this STBG track and the air quality track. We expect we'd be able to kick that off in October of next year and conclude the subregional call in June of '23. We would then immediately go through the process to adopt a new '24 to '27 tip later in 2023. The second option is what we're calling the parallel track. And I think most importantly, this really combines everything into one regional and subregional call that will cover everything from fiscal year '22 to down to '27. Those projects that are selected for funding in '22 to '25, we will be able to immediately amend the '22 to '25 tip, so the current tip. Those remaining projects that are in those out years would be automatically placed into the new tip, '24 to '27. And then, of course, those projects that were selected and put into the '22 to '25 tip, but automatically just be incorporated into the '24, '27 tip when adopted. So again, it would cover the '22 to '27 period, including all the funding sources that we have. We expect that we would be able to open that up in January of next year. It would take slightly longer because again, we're using both of those parallel tracks. Conclude that in November of next year and then work through the process to adopt the '24 to '27 tip right about on the schedule that we would normally have an adopted tip in that April to May timeframe of 2023. So now that we kind of, you know, have a basic understanding of what those two options are, we just wanted to highlight some of the pros and cons of both of these options. So option A, sequential, again, it's the four calls for projects back-to-back. This would allow for the quickest allocation of those newly identified multimodal funds. And again, that's especially important when we're looking at those FY22 funds, which have those obligation and end dates attached to them. As compared to the parallel process, that looks at, we'd be able to allocate those in October versus December of next year for that parallel track. In addition, since we're just using the air quality multimodal track first for that first '22 to '25 calls for projects, they would allow us to just sort of work out any additional details that need to work out instead of using those air quality multimodal and SPG SBBG track right away at the same time. I think most importantly, from the staff perspective, as part of the greenhouse gas rulemaking, there is a required RPD RTP update that is required by October 1st of next year. That would allow that update to occur before we really look into programming the '24 to '27 tip call. When we look at the parallel track, we do recognize that this is the quickest overall. Again, it just has one regional and one subregional call. You know, both these parallel funding tracks, we do expect that would take slightly longer, so that would delay the allocation of those '22 to '25 funds. Again, only by two or three months, but I think it's important to recognize, it's important to get those FY22 funds out the door as quick as possible. And finally, when we're looking at the RPD updates and the tip calls for projects, we certainly would not want them to sort of work on top of each other if we can help it. There is that potential, looking at any, you know, policy misalignments that may take place as part of either one of those processes. So that's sort of the quick and dirty overview of a couple of options that staff has presented. I think that's all the information that we have and certainly can talk through these as much as you'd like.
It's odd. Solicit question from members, but before we have one, oh, we have one. Director Dale, go ahead.
Yes, Todd, have you briefed our staff or technical experts on this at all yet?
Yes, last month, we did have a discussion with the TAC regarding both of these options. And every TAC member that was in attendance at that meeting was in favor of option A, the sequential process.
Not talking about tech. I'm talking about staff in our staff at our cities. So my counterparts in the cities are going to understand this better and be on top of and be able to do better than I am. And I'm leaving council in January. So I want to know, like, for my part, if Steve Glick has been briefed on this.
So one, I would go back to the TAC discussion we've had. I think that's a good representative sample. In addition to that, we have begun to have initial discussions with some of the forums. We've just had a discussion with the Douglas County Forum directly before this. So we have not reached out to anyone else or any other forums directly, but I think that we certainly could do that.
It makes sense to me for continuity of work and I don't have, that's what's on my mind, making sure somebody knows more about than me in a month and a half.
Thank you. Is that it, Director? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll make note that I'm watching the live transcript here because I want to save it. Then when you called on Todd, the transcript called him God. So I don't know if that means it's, this presentation is infallible or not, but.
That was pretty good there, Mr. Chair.
I do have questions about it. Director Teal, go ahead.
Todd, a question that actually arose when you were addressing, you know, presenting to the Douglas County Forum earlier today is, can you give us an idea, what kind of projects are going to be allowed in the instance of a sequential? And to push out the fiscal year 2022 MMOF, the CMAC, the TA, give us an idea, what kind of projects fall into each one of those categories? And what kind of projects we'd be looking to take care of in that first part of the sequential plan?
Yeah, I think it might be easier to approach it from a different direction to say which projects probably would not be eligible under the air quality multimodal track. Primarily, we're looking at roadway capacity projects. Is, and again, we haven't had a full internal discussions to allow which projects would be contained within each call, but I would certainly think that it would exclude a lot of roadway operational projects. Roadway reconstruction projects would not be allowed and eligible under the air quality and multimodal. So I didn't know if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So then what does that leave us with that would be eligible?
Right. Certainly looking at active transportation projects. Maybe a TDM project, transit projects would certainly be eligible. But I think those are the three big categories that certainly would be the focus within that track. Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Director Brockett.
Thanks for all that, Todd. And let me just say, I've always respected you, but with your new status, I respect you even more. So thanks for all that information. Question for you, you said that we'd still follow the policy of funding waitlist projects first. But then we've also got a new call for calls for a project that you're describing. Can you just describe to us how that will work in terms of funding, what's on the waitlist, and then moving to new projects?
Yeah, it's going to get very interesting because we would hope that we could start the waiting list process before late January, when we would want to release the call for projects for the regional share. But we certainly expect that they would overlap. So really, the first step within the waiting list process is to have an identification of those funds from CDOT. So again, the two sources would be the multimodal source, multimodal options fund, and any additional sources that would come in if a new bill passes. At that time, we would hopefully know what our level of funding is for '22 and '23 to program to the waitlist. We would simply start by, you know, walking down the list for each of the region and the subregions list. Ask a sponsor if they're willing to accept funds for that project. If they are, we would fund that. If not, we would simply keep moving down. And again, that would comprise, our total funds available would be comprised of the total unallocated amount within '22 and '23. Now, it does get a little complicated because at the same time, we're going to have to know and have a target funding for the regional call that we would be releasing in that late January timeframe. So it is certainly possible, as we move down the waiting list, our regional target for funds may end up decreasing slightly. It's one of those things that we wish we could handle one and then handle the other. But again, we're certainly just going to have to be aware of what that funding level is. I don't think it's going to change the structure of how the regional call would be conducted. It's just a matter of being aware of what that funding target may be at a certain time because certainly it could fluctuate.
Thanks for that. And then, follow-up, do you have a sense of the relative magnitude of the projects that are eligible that are on the waitlist versus the available funding? Like, are we potentially going to exhaust our funding with the waitlist or do we have a lot more money than we have projects waiting?
The amount of projects that we have on the waitlist will exceed the amount of funds that we will probably have, but it's really going to come down to the eligibility. So it's going to come down to what is that level of multimodal funds and which projects would be eligible for that funding type, in addition to which projects we could fund using the new funding type. So it's not a simple answer because we do not know the level of funds, exactly what it's going to be. But we did take a brief look at the waiting list projects and we certainly expect that we're not going to be able to exhaust the entire waiting list. Simply because rarely do we actually do that, but at the same time, there are some eligibility limitations that we're going to have.
Thanks, sir. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair.
Unmute. Thank you. Yeah, is that Ron?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I saw your hand up. I was trying to text you to see if you needed to clarify. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to maybe take a little bit different tack on this because as Todd said, it is rather complicated. The amount of funding available to go through the waitlist process does not represent the total amount of money we expect over this next tip cycle. It's only funding that we may have available that we did not expect during the '20 through '23 tip. So remember, we have projects programmed in those four years, '22, '23. Our current tip policy says if we have new unexpected revenue available before the last year of that tip cycle, so before October 1 of 2022 would be the trigger, then that triggers the waitlist process with whatever those available resources are for that time period, within that tip period. So I think it's, maybe it's a little bit of a misstatement to say that the we wouldn't, that the money we have would be exhausted by the waitlist projects. That's not true. It's, what we don't know is exactly how much money we might have available to go through the waitlist process before October 1st of 2022 under the current tip policy. And that's the piece. And Todd correctly says, you know, what we're proposing is that, you know, most of that money that would be available would really be the multimodal options fund money and CMAC money and some STBG money for projects that are already in the waitlist of that '20 through '24 tip. And the bulk of the money will still be available to go through this tip process, but the timing is not ideal. Trying to go through that waitlist process in the very near term now, perhaps overlapping into the first part of next year while we're beginning the regional share call under that option A process.
Thank you.
The option, sorry, the alternative for the board to consider would be, and you've done this before, a policy exception to basically wrap all of that money into this next tip process and forego the waitlist process. I think that's an alternative that's available as well.
All right, thank you. Executive Director Rex, did you want to jump in here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, very much. I wanted to just go back a little bit on Director Dale's comments with regards to reaching out to local staff because I think that's an important consideration for sure and we will definitely do that. I just want to shed a little bit more light on the transportation advisory committee and its role. Just so everybody's aware, and I know we got a number of new board members who have not gone through this process before, but the transportation advisory committee or the TAC is a representative body of local technical staff as well as CDOT and RTD and some other representatives are on there. We have representatives from aviation and some other sources and businesses and those types of things. So it's a good sample. It is part of our metropolitan planning process. So anything that involves an NPO function must get a recommendation from the TAC to go to RTC and the board. So for example, like in Jefferson County, Steve Durian, Jefferson County staff performs that role for Jefferson County right now. But we will, to Director Dale's point, we will reach out to local staff and make sure they are aware of this through our subregional forums. And, but I also encourage the directors to, you know, to share board materials with their staff too, so that they can weigh in. You know, when you guys are coming to the meeting. So thank you all very much.
And great. Thank you. Director Brockett, did you have something else here? Your hand is still up?
It's an old hand.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I just have one question. When I, when I reviewed this before the meeting. My natural inclination, if you go two slides ahead to the integration. Yeah, right there. My natural inclination was to. Option B, parallel quickest overall schedule. But what I note here is that. The bullet points that follow that are, are fairly negative. And I'm a little concerned that I don't see any cons. On option A, and I'm wondering, are you trying to lead us to toward the sequential option? By not telling us any of the negatives or is it truly that there are no negatives to the sequential approach?
I think the best way to sum it up is neither of these are perfect options. And we realize that this tip process is going to be different than what we've done before. I think. I think the best thing to say about the sequential process is. It really allows that R P D update, R T P update to really happen. Before we work through the process to select. Any potential capacity projects in the tip. Because as an outcome of the greenhouse gas rulemaking, it is unsure exactly what is going to be required of the R T P. When we look at the parallel process, we're. It's sort of looking at where we're going to be potentially selecting those. You know, roadway or any regionally significant projects at the same time that there is a. Potential update for the R T P, which may look at the opposite where we might need to potentially remove projects. So I, I think that's where. In terms of staff, we certainly are leaning towards the sequential process.
All right, that's fair. Thank you. Are there any other questions before we move on to the next item? I just want to, Director Dyak, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Again, from a process standpoint, if, if we do go through this where we have monies. That will go through the eighty twenty. Tabulation, I just want to verify that. And then if, if certain subregions or even the region doesn't have projects that qualify. Would that money still reside with, with those subregions and regions? I, I just want to. Make sure I understand the process here.
Yes. So any, any funding that we have does automatically per tip policy get split twenty percent to the regional and eighty percent to the subregional. The tip policy also stipulates that if we have any. Unallocated funds within the regional call. The unallocated funds will get transferred to the subregional, subregional call, and then of course. Split down percentage wise and targeted to the individual subregions.
So, so if, if a subregion doesn't have any projects, say that are on the waitlist. The options would be not to do another call for, for additional waitlist projects. It would be just to retain the money for the, for the next tip cycle. Is that correct?
Unsure. I'd, I'd have to get back with you honestly on that because we're looking at. Each one of these calls is going to contain different funding sources for different years. So one potential solution might be to look to ways to redistribute that funding to other subregions who potentially could use it. Quite honestly, I, I don't know off, just off the top of my head, what other solutions that we could come across with.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I'm, I'm sort of trying to maybe get a, extend Director Teal's. Ear- earlier thought is that, you know, obviously we have, we have projects and we're, we're late in the tip cycle. Some, some of those waitlist projects may actually have been. Either funded by a set aside or funded locally. So to. I'm sure that there's certainly projects within the subregion that would, that would qualify or that we would also like to. Have funded, but at, at this late stage, if you only have two or three projects. And maybe one or two or capacity. And then another couple are qualified but have been funded already. The next steps would be, and I think that's, that's where I, I don't have the answer as well. So looking forward to, to future clarity. Thank you.
Certainly. Before I go to do Director Brockett again, Ron, do you have something to add to this?
Yeah, I, I, I think if I understand the question correctly and Todd can correct me, but I, I, I believe that. If there, there, there aren't enough projects in a subregion to utilize the available money in the waitlist process. Then that money stays with that subregion and gets rolled into the full call for projects and the, in the tip cycle.
Okay.
I think that's the question that, that Director Dyak was asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I apologize, Mister Chair, but yeah, no, I, I just wanted to understand, you know, I think the flexibility is there if. If, if that's the way it is. You know, I, I just don't know if we have enough projects on the waitlist or projects that fit into, in these buckets. But we certainly, you know, from a subregion perspective, have projects that would, that would qualify. We just don't have them on the waitlist because. Of, of many various reasons. Thank you.
Director Brockett, you're up again.
Yeah, so I just wanted to ask, are you looking for feedback from the directors tonight or is this just a question opportunity?
I would give your feedback right now.
Great. Well, I'll, I'll just say it seems like option A seems like a good way to go just to get started on that earlier money as quickly as possible. And then let the R T P update proceed and avoid staff overload and potential policy misalignment. It sounds troublesome, so. Sounds pretty good.
Thank you. Director Walton, you are up.
Thank you. Yeah, I was wondering kind of what the next step was or kind of that action steps. If we were going to be asked to. You know, choose one of these options, I guess, at the next board meeting and wanted some, I, I joined a little late. So sorry if this was covered earlier in the presentation. Wanted to get a sense of what would require more staff time between option A and B. For the, at the local level.
Todd, you want to take that?
Yeah, so thank you. Certainly on the local level. Option A is certainly going to take additional staff time. We're essentially conducting. Four calls for projects back to back versus parallel. It's just two. In terms of action items, we have had this conversation with Tac. We're having this conversation with you. We are certainly going to take all feedback. We will incorporate the feedback we have into the tip policy documents. We expect to update the board on the tip policy coming up in December. And then we'll be looking for, at your January meeting, looking for a recommendation. So we will certainly, as we kind of continue along, incorporate this information. Into the tip policy document and then continue to release information as we prepare for those calls. One of the next steps that we will be taking based on your feedback here. Is certainly developing an overall schedule that will assist the forums. To sort of go through these steps at one, as we lead up to late January. But then certainly starting with that regional call in January to outline the steps that the forums need to take. To go through these calls for projects.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Director Shaw, you are up.
Thank you. I would just like to express a preference for option A, the sequential. The ability to get money in the hands of jurisdictions even three months earlier. May prove to be very useful. When all of the processes are completed and. Challenges that always are inherent with these projects or experience. So the extra time may be a real benefit.
Excellent. Thank you. Director Mulvey, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, I'm also in favor of the first option, not just because of the timing issues that have been expressed. But also because I think it presents some flexibility to the municipalities in the process.
Okay, thank you very much. I, Director Brockett, your hand is still up. Are you, do you want to come back in?
Another old hand, apologize.
Okay, not a problem at all. All right, thank you. Thank you for the great discussion. Let's move on to item five. Discussion of greenhouse gas planning rule revised proposal. I went through this and my head is swimming at. The comments that were accepted and denied and whatnot. So. Ron Papstorf is going to walk us through this presentation and strap in, folks. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Let's see, get this in presentation mode. All right, you should be seeing my. Transportation planning rulemaking presentation.
That's good.
Fantastic. I'm Ron Papstorf. I am the Transportation Planning and Operations Division Director at Dr. Cog. Good to be, is it good, good to be talking with you about the greenhouse gas rulemaking again? We thought we were done with this about four weeks ago. We're not. So just by, just bringing you up to speed back on October sixth, that your special meeting, the board endorsed a set of comments. That were submitted to seed out as part of the rulemaking process the next day. And then. About thirteen days later, almost two weeks, C dot issued a revised proposed rule. And as part of that revised rule extended the public comment period an additional month to November eighteenth. So we have, we've been spending some time reviewing that revised proposal. I think the, the good news is that there were a number of comments that you all submitted, that you all agreed to and. Provided to seed out as part of the rulemaking that were incorporated into this revised proposal. There were several that were not, and then there are some new issues that are, that are raised for us in the, kind of our new issues raised in the, in the proposed rule. So I kind of want to go through that a little bit this afternoon and. We'll, we'll quickly review that, the revised proposal in the context of the comments that, that were made and the response to those comments. As well as the, the new issues that, that we've identified in, in our review of the revised proposal. And want to have some discussion with you and get some direction about sort of next steps. There is a. Your next board meeting on November seventeenth would offer an opportunity if the board desires to. Adopt some new or additional or recent or re-support. Previous comments to submit again to the rulemaking by that noon deadline on the eighteenth. So I've got the revised schedule in the, in the packet for you, going back to July fifteenth, when the commission authorized the rulemaking. The notice rulemaking in August, that sixty day written comment period that ended in October. The revised schedule now extends that to the eighteenth of November, as I mentioned, and now the commission. Will consider adopting the proposed rule at their December sixteenth meeting, rather than their November meeting. And likewise, the effective date of the rule now extends out a month to the middle of February instead of the middle of January. So that's an update on the schedule. Just a quick reminder for those who haven't been paying attention closely over the last, I don't know, six plus hours. We've all talked about the, the greenhouse gas rule. This rule does amend it. The, the greenhouse gas transportation. Rule amends an existing state rule related to transportation planning process. The rule components include a preamble. There's some revised definitions. There's some revisions to the statewide transportation plan piece of the existing rule and then amendments to the regional and statewide transportation plan. Process. And then the meat of the greenhouse gas rule is in this new section eight. We've talked about those before about. The planning reduction, greenhouse gas reduction levels, determining compliance mitigation measures. Confirmation verification by the Air Pollution Control Division of the state and then. Enforcement, which the revised proposal now calls compliance and then the reporting component. Mister Chair, I do see Director Moby's hand is up and I didn't know if she had a question now or she wanted to wait until the end of the presentation.
That was a mistake. I apologize and thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, I'm going to get a little bit into kind of the, the comments. There were a couple of attachments included in the packet for you. So the, the, the final letter that was submitted with, with Dr. Cock comments. And then the attachment three to the packet was sort of a matrix of a little bit more detail on the comments that were submitted and. Some, a little bit more detail on how the revised proposal responded or didn't to those comments. I'll go through that in summary real quick. So the first comment was removing the baseline projections from table one of the rule. So the revised proposal does that. It removes those, the baselines from table one. It revises the definition of the baseline to refer to the emissions that are produced by sort of our most recently adopted. Model resulting from our, from the most recent R T P. So as of the effective date of the rule. So it sort of clarifies the definition of what is the baseline and sort of takes that out of the rule. We think that, that, that's a good response to our comment about allowing flexibility for the. Kind of adaptation over time as circumstances change. Population employment forecast might change pretty significantly from what we, what we know now. We, the board had requested that the twenty twenty five reduction levels in table one apply to. The Pike's Peak area, the Grand Valley M P O area and the Pueblo area. M P O area, and that was not included in the rise proposal. There was a comment to allow analysis of non-regionally significant projects when we're doing our compliance determination so that we can. Evaluate the full scope of our, the plan in question. And so there was language added in that section. To, to allow that and that sort of the reasonably significant projects at a minimum. Allow us to sort of look at the other, other important components of the plan when we're doing the analysis. There was a comment to revise a section to clarify that the analysis compares sort of the estimated emissions. From the plan to the, to the value of subtracting the base, the reduction levels from the baseline that was, that was not included. So C dot has prepared a little bit of a starting point of a technical. Work. We will continue to have to work with them without a change like this on sort of how to do the modeling, how to do the assessment and the compliance. The, the next comment was to clarify that the analysis of tips applies to the last year of the tip. So remember, if we, we adopt a near term four year transportation improvement program. Pretty tough to do a compliance assessment for the year twenty fifty horizon year, which is, you know, would be twenty five years in the future. Kind of a, doesn't add value because tips have to be compliant, have to be consistent with your regional transportation plan that goes through that. That longer term compliance, that change was reflected in the revised proposal. There was a comment to require M P Os and C dot to prepare and publish a calibration and validation report. That also was not addressed in the, in the revised proposal. There was a comment to require consultation with M P Os when developing the mitigation measures process and guidelines that was incorporated into the revised proposal. There was a comment to, to clarify how the restrictions on congestion mitigation, air quality funds and the surface transition block grant funds. C Mac and S D B G funds during the compliance determination is only necessary to the extent that, to achieve the greenhouse gas reduction level. So there was some language added to clarify that the restriction is as necessary to achieve the reduction levels. So that's a, the positive response to a comment from Dr. Cog. Okay, I think I, there we go. Thank you. Okay, the next comment was to add a provision to require sponsors of regionally significant. Roadway capacity projects to identify and include mitigation measures when those projects are. Included in a tip or the step. And so kind of when actual funding is allocated to those projects. To, to start the implementation phases, those projects. The, the revised proposal adds some, some language in the preamble of the rule. Which by reminder, the preamble is good constant context information, but does not have any force or effect. It's not, it's not enforceable. It's not binding. So it adds some context about C dot and M P Os and others considering mitigations at the time a project is developed and submitted into a transportation plan. So transportation plans a broader term than, than the tip or the step when we're actually allocating funding. So it didn't quite hit the mark on that one in, in terms of including it in the rule and sort of addressing the, the, the funding tie to the tip and the step. The next comment was clarifying that all C Mac S D B and ten year planned funds are restricted if the compliance isn't achieved. And remove that link, it's sort of related to a previous comment, but it was, was not addressed in. and remove that link. It's sort of related to a previous comment, but it was was not addressed in the in the revised proposal. Um, the next comment was to clarify that only MPOs um can seek a waiver or reconsideration and allow sixty days for that action. That request to happen um after after the Transportation Commission action on the compliance report rather than thirty days. So that was included into the revised proposal. Um, and then uh the next comment was to only require a waiver request for reasonably significant projects. So uh by reminder, there's a lot of projects that are included in a tip or an RTP that are safety projects or operational projects that really don't affect air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, but can can help us address really significant priority um issues in the region and the transportation system. And if we're not meeting the reduction standards, then our STBG and CMAC funding would be restricted. We would not be allowed uh to use the that money on those types of projects unless we got a specific waiver. And again, our comment was we shouldn't have to get a waiver from the Transportation Commission to use those funds on otherwise eligible projects that aren't reasonably significant and therefore aren't going to have that kind of impact on on greenhouse gas emissions. Um, and then uh the last two comments here, uh the rule should clarify the meaning of a substantial increase. Um, and this is in sort of that uh evaluating a waiver uh request. Um, and that was that was not included in the um in the revised proposal. And then finally, uh, this was a comment to sort of get away, get um remove the sort of pocket veto language in the in the rule that said that, you know, if if the commission doesn't take any action, then the request for a waiver reconsideration is deemed to be denied. So that was deleted from from the rule in the revised proposal. So that, sorry, I went through that fairly quickly, but we've we've talked about that a lot, but I wanted to get through that list and before I move into a couple of new items that are raised in the revised proposal. And then we can go back and go back and revisit um anything else, anything that the board wants to. So a couple of other changes in the preamble. Uh, there is a a pretty big new section added in the preamble that identifies core principles to guide the selection and delivery of mitigation measures. Uh, gives gives some context for sort of intent on that process, but again, has has no rule, has no real rule effect. It's not binding. It's not enforceable. But it does give a good indication of sort of the direction that CDOT intends to take. So considering benefits to disproportionately impacted communities, having a geographic nexus between the mitigation measures and the impacts um of 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 the of the particular project. Holistic air quality planning, um which which really raises, does raise an issue that we've been thinking about a lot about um kind of would not um allow um kind of operational improvements that improve traffic flow. So we do, we do, we do intersection operational improvements that sort of address a hotspot at an intersection and can significantly reduce um delay and reduce fuel consumption and therefore reduce greenhouse gas emissions. But under this guiding principle, those things uh would not be um would not be considered, would not be allowed to be considered mitigation measures. Um, then there's a there, there's a verification core principle and sort of uh uh kind of having having the mitigation measures be at a reasonable scale to the impact of the of the project. So that's one issue in the preamble. Um, in section eight point zero two for determining compliance. Um, it it does add some some uh a new section that was the restrictions on CMAC, SDBG funds and the tenure plan funds don't apply to projects that have been advertised for construction with funding identified prior to the adoption of the planning documents. So remember the applicable planning documents are the tips and the regional transportation plan as well as the tenure plan uh for CDOT. Um, so basically, if we don't meet compliance, there are some sort of projects that are already well underway that have already been advertised for construction, and this language would say um, the rule is not going to stop those from from proceeding because they're they're just too far down the path um towards implementation. Um, and then there's um some additional illustrative examples of mitigation measures added to that section, particularly focused on kind of rural area sort of examples of what mitigation measures would be appropriate or could be appropriate. Um, in section eight point zero five, this is now the compliance section. This was the enforcement section. Um, it does add uh thirty day or an extra regularly scheduled meeting, a timeline for the commission to make a determination, which is a uh we think a pretty good addition. There actually was not, had not been a time for timeframe identified in the rule uh for that. Waivers can be requested at any time, including concurrently with the submission of a greenhouse gas transportation report. So I think the intent of this new language was to, if if you're if you're submitting your compliance report, you're not and and you know you want to request a waiver for some set of projects, you can submit that with your greenhouse gas transportation report. Um, instead of waiting or doing it with it, waiting until after the commission actually kind of makes their determination. Um, it also um adds um a requirement that um a request for reconsideration has to be submitted within thirty days. So this now conflicts with section eight point zero five point two, which was changed um and uh was was changed in a way that was consistent with one of our comments to request that 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 timeframe be extended from thirty days to sixty days to give us time to work with the board to decide if we wanted to submit a waiver or or reconsideration request in this case. Um, and that change was made in the previous section, but then this new language was added that the reconsideration request had to be made in thirty days, within thirty days. So there's a a new conflict that was created with uh that new addition. Um, and then the last, the last, um, the last one is um in the reporting section, this, the eight point zero six reporting existed in the in the in the previous uh rule. Um, and it really kind of set a requirement for CDOT to report to the commission periodically. I think it was every five years. Now it's every three, three years about sort of status. Um, but it adds this new requirement that beginning September first of next year and every year after that, um, CDOT has to provide a report to the commission documenting vehicle miles traveled per capita for MPO areas and statewide for the previous year, and it's the previous calendar year. So the the report on September first of twenty twenty-two would report on the year from January of twenty-one through December of twenty-one. And then each year, then the next year would be for twenty-two and so forth and so on. Um, if the vehicle miles traveled per capita does not decrease for three consecutive years in any one area, so any of the five MPOs or on a statewide level. Um, so even if all the MPOs, the BMT per capita was trending down or not increasing, but uh but the non-MPO part of the state, it was going up, then the commission would consider revisions to the rules to achieve reductions in vehicle miles traveled uh consistent with the intention of the rule. So want to talk about this one a little bit because this is a pretty significant new addition uh to the rule. Um. So one, vehicle miles traveled is not something you measure, you estimate it. Um, you, we, we can't go out and count every trip that occurs on the transportation system um every year. Um, so that creates some some challenges. You might also know that, you know, for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty before this, um, you know, we're we're at a stage primarily because of a a global pandemic and reduced economic activity and uh reduced employment levels that that VMT is down. Uh, we're starting it. So so the the starting point for this analysis would be a a down year, uh an unusually down year. And then um, you know, you you couldn't, and you'd have to see a decrease um from that for over three years. That that seems a little problematic, uh given that we we think that this is while it's been a good outcome, a positive outcome of the pandemic, there's a lot of bad reasons uh why we've had that outcome um related to the pandemic. So that's a, that's a little challenging. The other challenging part of this is the fact that, you know, even if we're doing really well and we're achieving VMT per capita reductions in our region. If another MPO isn't, or if at us, at the non-MPO part of the state or statewide isn't, then, you know, potentially there's there's new rulemaking that gets triggered um that the to 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 actually um achieve reductions in in VMT. And and my last comment on this is that while there is is some correlation between vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions, it's it's not a cause, it's not a straight causation. Um, there are a lot of, lot of um, a lot of impacts on greenhouse gas emissions from transportation. It's primarily related to fuel consumption and um you might have the same level of vehicle miles traveled, but operating better and less congestion and burning less fuel for that same VMT level. Um, and and therefore emitting less greenhouse gas emissions. Um, and 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 the state law Senate Bill two sixty that sort of led to this rulemaking doesn't speak to a VMT rule. It speaks to a greenhouse gas rule. And I think that at least we feel a staff that bringing in vehicle miles traveled into this rule and trying to intermingle um VMT and greenhouse gas emissions sort of isn't quite consistent with with the law. So um, lot of, lot of issues with this one. It's a, it's a pretty tough one. Um, understand sort of the desire here, but I think there's a lot of reasons why we think it's it's not a great idea.
Sounds like a ratchet effect, doesn't it?
Little bit. Um, so um, just to kind of discussion again. So I just to get you started, some of the questions that we have, you know, are there, are there comments that weren't addressed from Dr. Cog that you want to consider sort of resubmitting? Um, and then kind of get your reaction and discussion about sort of that operational improvements as mitigation measures issue. Uh, there that that reconsideration timing conflict and the VMT provision. With that, I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, any directors have questions? Just to get it started, okay. Uh, Director Odoricio, go ahead.
Team, um, I'm looking at this and uh, can can you clarify the uh issue of of the modeling again? Uh, the EPA versus the Dr. Cog model? Um, that's one question. I just want to make sure we're at least our team is all on the same page on this. And then um and then I have a couple others, but I we, I wanted to start with that just to make sure that we're, you know, being able to address some of our our issues about making sure that we model this correctly so we can understand uh how it is impacted, especially so we're not using two different methodologies.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair Director Odoricio, um, yeah, the, you know, the rule does have some good language about the collaboration, the cooperation around setting um consistency around the modeling process. We think that's all good. We look forward to participating in that work. As we've talked to the board about before, there there are a series of models here, right? And so there's our travel demand model that is sort of the the Dr. Cog travel model. That's what, that's how we estimate travel patterns, travel demand. Uh, that's all based on population employment impacts and information about the transportation system and and travel behavior. Output, certain outputs from that model then are input into the moves model. That's the EPA model that estimates actual air pollution emissions, including greenhouse gas emissions. So the two models work together. Our, the Dr. Cock travel model does not, does not estimate pollution emissions. It doesn't, it doesn't estimate volatile organic compound emissions or greenhouse gas um emissions. It estimates travel patterns. We take those travel patterns and information about the transportation system and put that in, and that goes into the moves model, which actually estimates the air quality uh the the air pollution emissions. So they do work together. There's a component in the rule that talks about collaborating, cooperating, making sure that we have consistent processes. We think that's largely been addressed in the rule.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll follow up with other questions after we go around. I don't want to take up all the time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Director Levy, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Um, and thanks, Ron, for all your work on this. And uh uh, let me just lower my hand here so I don't end up being one of those old hands. Um, I think so, uh, there's several of our comments that I think are worth resubmitting, but for now, I think what I want to focus on is is that what they put in the preamble. Um, and and whether that should be in the regulation instead. And if if the Transportation Commission says that the preamble actually will have some teeth in some way uh in i- in this document, maybe I wouldn't be concerned about it, but um, I think that there are a couple of things that really need to be in the role. Um, there's the, let me find it. Um, oh, the provision that adds language to the preamble that CDOT and the MPOs shall consider mitigations at the time a project is developed and submit submitted. That's really important. Um, that's directive language that I think, um, you know, the preamble probably isn't strong enough for that. Uh, the new language um around um the purpose of the mitigation measures uh uh there as well. Um, I I think in order to actually be effective, I'd like us to suggest that those actually be reworked into policy so that they're effective. Um, and then, you know, that we have some other comments as well, but I I think I do just want to speak to that very last point about the VMT reductions. And while I was one who testified at the Transportation Commission that I think we need to have a VMT reduction uh target in here because so much about modeling is is going to be pretty loose and unknown and VMT is a is a, you know, there's a closer correlation, and I understand your comments, Ron, on that. Um, I I'm a little puzzled if there isn't a regulation or a a provision in the rule rather that requires a VMT reduction or sets a target. It it's puzzling to me how you would um ascertain that we need to revise the rule because we're not meeting standards or targets that aren't in the rule. So I think I I would rather see them actually put some thresholds for reductions in the rule. Um, and then have this approach of um having a three-year period to look for reductions and and then revise the rule to achieve those if it's not happening and recognizing, you know, the issues that you've identified around, well, what happens if one region is and another region isn't, you don't want to, you don't want to have those revisions apply all across the state. I think that's a challenge, but I think that's something that can be drafted around and and also recognizing that we might be in a lull, but I guess I would just say I think it's a good idea to have some of those VMT reduction targets. Um, and if they don't adopt them, then I agree, but it's it's uh not, you know, just saying we're going to revise the rule for not meeting a target that doesn't exist, wouldn't be a good approach. Thank you.
Certainly. Ron, do you have a comment on that?
I I I I think staff has a slightly different perspective than Director Levy, and I think that's fine. Um, we we I think from a staff perspective, we don't think this rule is the place for a VMT reduction target. It should, we should be focused on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And that that's kind of the staff perspective and kind of tying in VMT reduction is sort of a a little bit of a kind of a different thing. And we we don't, we don't believe that it's a a straight up causation between sort of alignment between VMT and um and greenhouse gas emissions. And and let me say for the record, like Dr. Cog and we we believe and we're, we have targets to reduce VMT per capita. We do um for a lot of good reasons. Um, and and air quality is one of them. Um, but for for the reasons that I articulated as a staff level, we just don't think it's appropriate to to tie in VMT reductions into into the greenhouse gas rule um the way the rule has.
Thank you. Uh, Director Mulvey, go ahead. Or Director Levy, did you want to retort?
Well, no, I don't want to retort. Um, I'm not feeling retortful, but um, no, if you just, what do you think of the idea though of uh on what's in the preamble and whether that um really belongs in the rule? It doesn't have any effect being in the preamble.
Yeah, Director Levy, I, look, I I we staff, staff was supportive and and we appreciated the board agreeing with sort of the comment to to tie mitigation measures to reasonably significant roadway projects when they're being added to the tip and the step. We think that's that's a, that's really appropriate. We think that's really helpful and will help us over time achieve greenhouse gas emission reductions. It ties specific mitigation measures to specific projects that might have a a negative impact. Um, and so, you know, I think from a staff perspective, we would support sort of resubmitting that comment again. And, you know, I think CDOT did a And so, you know, I think from a staff perspective, we would support sort of resubmiting that comment again. And, you know, I think C dot did a. C dot was trying to accommodate that by putting it in the preamble. Again, I think our our perspective is. Was just a little bit off the mark from what our comment was. And, you know, we think that that would be a valuable addition to the rule.
All right, thank you. Director Mulvey, go ahead.
Hi, yes, I wasn't planning on getting into that that subject, but as the conversation occurred. I do want to add something to it that may not have been thought about. I perhaps somebody hasn't spoken on it yet is is thinking about it, but the mandate of the. Two laws that this emanated from. Was greenhouse gases, not vehicle miles traveled. So I think if we propose or somebody else proposes. A different metric or to propose a different standard, you're exceeding the mandate of the legislation. That concerns me. And maybe that's just, you know. That brain I have that looks at that kind of stuff. The other concern I would have is if. If we put a false target in there, why would we? Put a target we know is defective. So if we're going to comment on this, if there's a consensus to comment on it. Just as with the substantial language that we discussed last time, perhaps we can craft some language. That asks for the target to reflect the concerns that have been articulated. That address. That it's not going to apply or that it would have inequitable results. So, for example, all of those communities that have successfully implemented means by which to. Reduce the impact of the. Miles that are traveled by putting in or incentivizing EVs. Or putting in charging stations, well, then there that's going to short shrift the entire region. It's going to render absolutely meaningless all of that effort because those miles are still being traveled. So. And and we really should think carefully about that metric if we're going to use it. So my go going to my question. I'm in section eight and I have two questions on section eight point oh two point six point one point three. I didn't name it that. The restrictions don't apply to projects. You've mentioned this. That have been advertised for construction and funding identified prior to the adoption of the. The rules. Is does that mean if you've like where in the process is your approval that you get grandfathered in and don't have to go through all of this? That's my first question.
Mr. Chair Director Mulvey, so on the on that section you referenced about sort of. A safe harbor, I guess, provision for current kind for current projects, for projects that have advertised for construction. So the the applicable planning documents are the transportation improvement plan, adoption. And regional transportation plan adoptions and amendments. So if so, our first. Planned trigger for the rule will be our update to our current twenty fifty RTP, which. We're targeting to have completed by the October one deadline of next year. So that would trigger compliance assessment. If there's a. Project included in the plan. That already has been advertised for construction by that point. Then there and using STBG funds through Dr. Cog. It would, it would not be. It those funds for that project would not be restricted.
I think I got it, but I might have a follow up after I think about it more. Does that learning curve? My next question is a couple paragraphs down eight point oh two point six now point three. This says mitigation measures are needed to count towards reduction levels, blah, blah, blah. It basically like. My question on this paragraph is, is this new language? Is that changing things substantively? And if so, what is it? Because I'm not getting it. It looked bad, but it might not be.
I think our 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 assessment of that is it's a, it's a, it's a clarification of the intent of that section of the rule and and consistent with the language we had already reviewed. And just just clarify sort of when. Which mitigation measures you have to actually would be subject to that that action, that mitigation action plan and and reporting. So. We think that's, we think that's clear, primary clarifying language.
Thank you. My third question involves a few provisions. And I did bring it up earlier today. There seems to be a new definition for greenhouse gases. That's one item in one point one seven. And so these are definitional question in the definitional section. So the first question in that section was, how did we get the definition for greenhouse gases? I'm just curious about the source. Not critical, just curious.
I I don't know about the source and I might at the chair's discretion if. If Director White is is on the call, she may be able to address that specifically. My understanding is. That this is a pretty pretty standard accepted definition of greenhouse gas pollutants. And the the revision here was just to try to reflect that rather than sort of a little bit more of a shorthand definition that was in the original rule.
Gotcha. Yeah, it does look meteor. Okay, then my second one is the one that addresses a couple other things. There seems to be a change in the definition for how regionally significant projects can change. So in section one point four two. It looks as though. Oh, now I can't find it. It looks as though you can change. How something is considered or defined to be regionally significant. And then that ends up affecting eight point oh two. Point three. When you look at a regionally significant project under the mitigation plan. I was wondering how that came about.
So Director Mulvey, this is that that additional language is highlighted there and the revised rule was to address some. Some issues that have been raised by rural areas of the state where so remember, MPOs like Dr. Cog. Have to adopt a definition of reasonably significant project. We we have that as part of our federal planning process. That's approved by our federal partners as part of our 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 planning process. And the definition of recently significant projects accounts for that. Our approved definition of reasonably significant projects is what applies in our MPO area. We're good with that language. This change is saying that for those rural areas where they don't have federal transportation planning responsibility. They wanted a process where they could. They could work with the state interagency consultation team to develop a definition that would apply to their area. You know, can can in consultation with C dot and and the other partners involved that process. So this change does not affect Dr. Cog.
Okay. So it's a may not a must and. It's not, okay, kind of looks like somebody could step in and change it on us.
No, they 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 may not.
Okay. Thank you for those clarifications.
Thank you. Director Shaw, you're up.
Thank you. I I had a thought on the VMT question. It does seem like it's overreaching as staff believes for addressing greenhouse gas. Legislation as this rule is meant to do, but. I could certainly see that a jurisdiction in presenting a project might use. VMT as some of the rationale to support. The the what this project that jurisdiction is putting forth. Is doing and what they hope to accomplish. So it is a. I think, Ron, you said this as well, that it is important that we. We work to reduce VMT, but. It is not always correlative to. You know, reducing greenhouse gases. So just a thought there, I I. I see Director Levy's point on. Incorporating this in some way and it might be up to that, the jurisdiction. I also had a comment about. This came up in our Douglas County subregional tip group today that. This rule doesn't make allowances or consideration of existing transportation. Infrastructure investments and because it doesn't take those into account. It's almost like a penalty for a region who has preplanned. When in reality. Those regions preplanning perhaps should be rewarded because the the bigger picture. Is there to support. Their their current project, but it was an expenditure that was made quite some time ago. I know that we as Douglas County are going to incorporate that in the letter that we send. But I I I would love for us to find a way to incorporate that into our. Ask for an addition in the rules. Or perhaps an addition in the scoring. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Odoricio.
I I think. Director Shaw really hit the nail on the head that VMT is a valid and could can be an important means to an end. I put that in the chat. So sorry if it's a little redundant, but it's a means to an end and 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 should not be considered an end, but it could be a very valuable means. And so if it helps. Achieve the greenhouse gas reductions, then that's a great. A great mitigation measure. I just want to make sure that we're also including some of the others. That are important to help us achieve those greenhouse gas reductions, which include operational mitigation measures. And then also the ability to bundle, which allows us to kind of take a few of them and and not have just one means to. Reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We're we're trying to achieve a goal here. And I think the more we can make the goal achievable by many different folks in many different jurisdictions. Then we are achieving our ultimate objective and our goal. And I don't want us to 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 narrow it down just to only a few things. I think the more we can make this inclusive. We can all on this call participate and we can all. Have a part in reducing greenhouse gas emissions.
Director Rocket, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for that, Director Odoricio. I think that was very well put. So and Steph, I definitely hear your concerns about the VMT provision as written and, you know, Director Levy pointed that out as well. And just my my comment would be. Hopefully we can send a comment that doesn't say ignore VMT, but that points out the specific issues with the way it's being proposed. While potentially looking for a way to examine VMT and and decreases or increases and their direct effect on greenhouse gas emissions. So that you, to your point, Ron, about how there. Different kinds of VMT have different benefits or 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 problems, you know, that that it takes that into account. That's that's my comment on that. And then just in terms of resubmitting previous comments, I I thought. The point about resubmitting the one of them that says, take it out of the preamble and put it into actionable language made sense. Staff, are there others that you would advocate for us resubmitting that you think are particularly important?
Ron, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Rocket, I I think, yes, we we remain. I think we remain committed to the notion that sort of waiver requests for all projects seems like. An unnecessary step. That sort of. Kind of tying waiver requests to specific reasonably significant projects makes sense in the context of the rule. But as we've stated before and discussed before, there are, there are a lot of investments in a in a plan or a tip that are not reasonably significant, but are really important. Not reasonably significant as defined under the rule, right? Not those big capacity projects. But are really important to the region achieving other important transportation priorities like like safety. And and to have to to have to have to submit a waiver request in in the case where we aren't meeting the reduction levels. And to have to ask the commission for a waiver to use funds that are suballocated to us by the federal government. To use on projects that are eligible for those funds that won't have an impact on greenhouse gas emissions. It seems inappropriate. And I I think that's staff's, that remains staff's feeling. So I think that's probably one where we would, we would suggest. That that be that be reiterated back to to see that as as part of this.
Okay, great. That makes sense. And I guess the the one other one I would I would call out would be. Appreciate that that they said that there there would be a collaboration with the MPOs on the modeling and the validation report. I continue to feel like having the parameters be public would be very beneficial. So that that would be one that I would advocate for the. Going back about that public aspect of it.
Thank you. Excellent discussion. I really appreciate it. I don't have any other directors in the queue and that's good because we have a very important P and E. Meeting coming up right after this in about three minutes. So Steve, I don't know if you're going to go over and start that meeting now. But I just want to let you all know, I appreciate the discussion. It was very good. And seeing no other business, I will declare the meeting to be adjourned. We'll see the P and E members over at. Over at the next meeting. Thank you all. See you in two weeks.
Night, everyone.